Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Board of Education meeting, February 8th, 2023. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading of the mission statement: We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families in our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Questions or comments from interested citizens? We had nothing at the last meeting. This meeting, we do have someone. We have the Honorable Mayor Neil Dwyer. Is Mr. Dwyer here? All right. He wanted to speak recognition of the MWHS String Quartet, MWHS Voice Ensemble Participation in the Village of Monroe 9/11 Ceremony, and the Village of Monroe Winter Festival. So we'll move on with the agenda then. State Testing follow-up, Dr. Hassler and Mr. Kravitz.
Got these nice seats up here.
Mr. Kravitz and Dr. Hassler, I just would like to read something because if everyone notices, we have art on the left and right of us. To my left are the art projects created by the students of Smith Clover Elementary. Both projects are representative of the work students are doing in the classroom. As you can see, from the Winter Wonderland of Polar Bears, students drew their animals and then completed a writing project explaining what polar bears look like, where they live, and what they eat. Then we have A Dream features photos of students and their dreams based on discussions about Dr. Martin Luther King and his famous "I Have a Dream" speech. On my right are projects from the Sapphire Elementary. Throughout the school year, students have been learning the foundations and elements of art. They've created paintings using different kinds of lines and patterns with oil pastels, and they have painted with watercolors. They have created collages with geometric and organic shapes, and they recently learned about color and how we can make the secondary colors by mixing the primary colors. These art skills that students are learning now are the foundations to have them grow into creative young adults, and we really appreciate them bringing this art to us to display and enjoy. So thank you for that. And now I will turn it over to the both of you, please.
Michael, the mayor just walked in.
Okay. What do we want to do?
I think you can, can you guys wait a bit?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Sure.
No, we got to do this now. He's got to sit through this.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to come up, we were just very efficient, so kind of just missed the window. So we have a podium right there if you'd like.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Good evening, and I apologize that I'm late. For anyone who doesn't know me, I'm Mayor Neil Dwyer. I represent the Village of Monroe, and all my constituents are here tonight with me. I want to acknowledge, take an opportunity to speak to the board, thank you for giving me this opportunity, and the superintendent and the committee here. I'm hoping to get an opportunity to acknowledge a bunch of great kids. And I say kids, I mean young people, people that I feel very strongly about. When I became mayor, one of the things I did was I wanted to create an environment where we were no longer an island, but we were part of a community, and I didn't want to stand alone. So I invited seven different municipalities to show up, whom my board was sworn in. And a lot came, Monroeberry came, Chester came, Town of Monroe and so forth. Anyway, what was interesting about that is we run our village like that. We try to be inclusive, we look for partners, we look for ways that we can incorporate whatever we're doing in our village with the community. And the Monroeberry Central School District has been an incredible partner, starting with our SRO program, which has been just amazing for us in helping to make parents and the district feel very secure in the environment that our offices keep the administration and the children safe. And from what I gather from coming into Pine Tree in North Main, it's amazing experience to see. On the other side, a very interesting thing that I came to know about and so appreciate is the musical talent that's in this district. I mean, bar none. I mean, I can't sing a song, sing a note. I can go like this if you'd like me to a little bit, but I can't do much else than that. But I do recognize passion. And passion comes in a lot of different strains, and in this particular case, it comes in both choral and it comes in strings. And the Monroeberry School District, Dr. David
Crone.
Crone, Mr. Toborski, and Ms. Lauren Byrne have been just amazing. You know, I get to them through Peter Dawson, who I think probably most of you, if some of you don't know him, he's just amazing. So he's been my liaison in trying to get all this moving along. And I want to acknowledge these students because they're amazing. I mean, the 9/11 in the Village of Monroe, if anybody's ever been to it, it's a very poignant, a very heartfelt, very somber environment. And these young people bring something to that element of that event I can't even describe. And every year that they've been involved, and this is going to be year three that they've done this for me and the village, is they, people will come up and say, you know, Neil, I thought you guys hit it out of the park last year. You outdid it this year. And to listen to them, and I picked some of the songs because I'm just one of those people. They say micromanager, I don't know if that's the right word. I think it's more about somebody that really wants to hit home the message for what we do in the village. Because, you know, a lot of people were affected that day, right? And to this day still are. So I'd like to, if I could, read these names into the different aspects of it. So first off, on our 9/11, we had a string quartet led by Ms. Lauren Byrne, and it was Max Herskovich, Matt Q., Alexis Leoni, and Gerald Haber Jr. They were just amazing. You know, and you watch them, and they're dressed appropriately, they do their thing, they just represent you all amazingly well. I want you to know that. It's just amazing to watch. On the song, on the voice ensemble, Tyler Landuski, Kylie McCarron, James Dawson, Jacob Seriello, Julia McQ., Emma Finanow, Daniel Solano, Ava Simone, Julianne Calab, Ashley Castillo, Joe Guerrero, Armani Fish, Yeheli Cruz, Emerson Stone, Arianna Eisner, Josh Gorlin. We had a couple of soloists, James Dawson and Kylie McCarron. And I say as they say, Dr. Crone, Lauren Byrne, I mean, just amazing people, and Chris Toborski, these are partners. I mean, these aren't, these are my partners in the village, and I can't say enough about that. If you haven't been to a 9/11, you got to get there and you got to be part of it. It's just an amazing, amazing experience to hear these kids. And it's live. We have it on our channel at the village, so you're welcome to see that as well. On the Christmas thing this year, I wanted to do something in bringing the downtown into the community, and I asked these students if they'd be willing to come in and carol, simple caroling. And, you know, me being a bit of the nut, we went to every business that would welcome us in, and it was amazing. And you just have to kind of sit back and you watch these young people do their thing, and then they go into this whole thing, and it's just amazing to watch. And you just sit back and you're in awe. Then you want to jump in and be part of it, but you realize you can't sing, so you just got to back off again. And again, it's a lot of the same cast of folks, but again, each place they went into couldn't say enough about these young people, really, just an amazing crew of people. So again, Arianna Eisner, Jacob Seriello, Alexa Grisser, Charlotte Scanlon, Emerson Stone, Nicole Octavio, Gregory Grisser, James Dawson, and Kylie McCarron. I think this school district is amazing. I think they put out an incredible product. I think they bring young people. And I said it to the dam, and it's the most politically incorrect thing I could have probably said, so I'll tell you what I said. When they're all in the tent after the Christmas thing, I said, I love you all.
Okay. Thank you.
It means a lot in the community. I don't mean to get upset, but we all come from different places. We all have different ideas, different policies, different politics, all of it. But at the end of the day, these young people bring me their hope, knowing that what we're trying to continue and building today will continue because of them, or students like them. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Absolutely. Laura, is yours?
I think before we get started, one of the nicest things to hear about the students who had a chance to really to go into the businesses to carol was the day that before winter break here, it was the day where we traditionally have our students go from building to building and do that. And this year, we had a snow day. So there was no, you know, in-district caroling. So it's nice to hear that they were still able to do that and impact, you know, the people in the community. So thanks for letting them do that.
And during COVID, it was, it didn't happen. And last year was the first year getting it back. And you realize what you missed. Once you got it back, you're like, wow, it was tough not having it for that year. So awesome.
Now we have great 3-38 ELA.
It looks like you have your bodyguards today.
Yeah, I'm going to introduce them in just a second. So last month-
We had to bring in reinforcements.
Last month, Eric and I presented about the 3-38 ELA and math results. There were four questions that came out as a result of that presentation. But before we get into that, I just want to be able to, I want to introduce the people to our right, and Eric, you can introduce the people to your left. To my right, we've got Mr. Judice, who's the principal of Pine Tree Elementary. We have Dr. Alt, who's the principal of Central Valley Elementary.
And Joe Coto, who's the principal of North Main, and Chris Berger, who's the principal of the middle school.
All right.
So our presentation from the last Board of Education meeting resulted in a variety of different questions being asked and some discussion points. And we first wanted to start by summarizing what the key questions were that were asked for us to come back here to follow up with the board. The first two questions relate to a STAR, the STAR assessment that we administer three times a year. And the first question was, do STAR assessment results indicate the same levels of proficiency as the New York State Testing Program? That's NYSTP. And the second question is, do STAR assessment results indicate the same gaps between students who are economically disadvantaged and students who are non-economically disadvantaged, as indicated in the New York State Testing Program results that we presented last time?
And then there were, what are the goals for this year? So in the coming days and weeks and months ahead, what are the goals for 22, 23, as it relates to these assessments? And then how will we address and work towards increasing the level of students of participation and proficiency as reflected on the New York State School report card?
Okay.
You sure?
Not you?
Okay, thanks. So I just want to, I'll go through these very quickly. This slide was shown last month. It was the scores from grade 3 through 8 in English Language Arts. It has both the proficiency rates, and then the bottom had the participation rates for every grade. And we discussed that a little bit last month. This is, these are the STAR proficiency rates. So I just want to go through very briefly a few things just to explain what STAR is. STAR, STAR reading is a benchmark that we give to all of our students in grades 3 through 8, three times a year. It is nationally normed, so it's unlike the New York State ELA test. This is strictly a reading test. There are inherent differences between this assessment and the New York State assessment. Because this is just based on, not only is this just based on reading, it's also what's called an adaptive test. So it remembers where you, where a student was the last time he or she took the test. And then, as the student progresses, if they, if they get an answer correct, they move on to a harder question. If they get an answer incorrect, it backs down and they ask a different type of question. It's strictly reading. It's presented one passage at a time, so one, one reading, a single reading passage, as opposed to the New York State ELA test, which is typically multiple passages. There are also multiple choice, the New York State test, but there are also short answer and more extended response questions, which is different than the STAR reading benchmark that we give. As far as the proficiency rates, what you'll see here are, these are from last spring, so right around the same time that the New York State test was administered. The proficiency benchmarks that we use are the ones dictated by the STAR assessment. So when you look at this, you can see that from our third grade, 75% of our students were proficient, or met the proficiency rate on the STAR assessment in grade 3, 70% in grade 4, 67% in grade 5, 67 in grade 6, 59 in grade 7, and 57 in grade 8. That's pretty much that, right?
So similar to what Matt had just spoken about, this is the slide that we showed to the board at the last meeting regarding our June, our spring 2022 math proficiency results, again, grades 3 through 8, again, illustrating what our participation rate was as well. Again, same exact slide as what was given last time. Similarly, we gathered our proficiency results from this spring administration of the STAR math exam in grades 3 through 8. Proficiencies in, proficiency in third grade was 78%, fourth grade 77%, 75 in fifth, 75 in sixth, 63 in seventh, and 69 in eighth. One other quick point regarding the math and the STAR math and the STAR reading. The computer, the, we had talked a bit about computer-based testing at the last, at the last meeting. And the difference between the STAR exam and the state assessment, as Matt had shared, the STAR assessment is exclusively multiple choice, where on the reading and the, and the state ELA and the state math exam, the students have an extended response question where they do writing passages on the ELA side. But on the math side, they have extended response questions where there are a series of tools that the students need to use. So part of the work that we're going to be discussing shortly is how we are preparing the students to continue to take that assessment on the, on the computer. The difference with the STAR math exam is that there is no extended response questions where the students have to manipulate any tools. It is exclusively computations that are done on scrap paper, and then multiple choice questions that are transcribed. The STAR math is also adaptive, just like the reading exam, where the student logs in. The exam knows where the student tested previously when they sat and took the exam, and it's adaptive where the questions get more difficult if they get the questions right, and the questions back off if they get the questions incorrectly.
So those are the answers to, that was the first question.
Correct.
All right. The second question, just to reiterate, was, do STAR assessment results indicate the same gaps between students who are economically disadvantaged and students who are non-economically disadvantaged, as indicated by the New York State Testing Program?
So at the last Board of Ed meeting, we also, we shared a slide of a sample analysis that we do when we're looking at data. And one of the things that we do is we do a deeper dive into how some of our different subpopulations do. And the slide that we showed at that time was the comparison of proficiency between our economically disadvantaged students and our non-economically disadvantaged students. And that's what prompted the second question that was asked about, the gap that existed between the two. And the question was, do we see a similar gap in our STAR reading results? So as we go through and we analyze our STAR reading results, we do a very similar gap analysis. This is a sample report of that, where we do, this is of the STAR reading exam, again, in spring of 2022, where we continue to see that gap between our non-economically disadvantaged students and our economically disadvantaged students. So the darker purple is the proficiency of our economically disadvantaged students, and the lighter purple is the proficiency of our non-economically disadvantaged students. So that gap that we spoke about last time, in this particular analysis, does continue to exist. So that was the second question that was asked.
So the third question was about the goals. What are the goals for this coming year? We focused on two, as indicated earlier. One is regarding participation, and how do we get students to take this assessment, and why do we believe that students should take it? And the second one is based on achievement.
So, and this was something that was discussed at the tail end of the presentation last time about the importance of students sitting down and taking the exam. And collectively, when we were preparing this presentation, we all collectively agreed that, you know, the emphasis of the school district was going to be that the students should sit and take the exam. So the goal itself is that the Monroeberry School District Administration, with the support of the board, is committed to increasing all efforts for students in grades 3 through 8 to take the exam. First and foremost, that the students will sit and participate in the exam. And the goal is that we will increase the number of students participating on the ELA and math state assessments as cohorts in grades 3 through 4 by 5%. Now, what we mean by cohorts in grades 4 through 8 by 5% is we took the number of students that participated as third graders last year, and we will look to see as fourth graders this year, that 5% additional students will participate in taking that state assessment. And that 5% will still continue for students that were fourth graders last year into fifth grade, fifth into sixth, sixth into seventh, and seventh into eighth. Now, third graders will be sitting for the state assessment for the first time, so we are committed to having at least 88% of third grade students participate in the ELA and math state assessments this year, which aligns with what our participation rate was last year for third grade.
So three of the people up here at the table with me, in addition to me, and then a few others, tomorrow, we get to take part in a crusader chat. And I don't know if anybody wants to plug that. I'm going to, Brian, you want to plug that?
Sure. Tomorrow at 11:30, we'll be speaking live at the meet, talking about the importance of taking the state assessments, and how they are of use to our students, to our schools, to our staff, to the administration, and to the entire school district to help us guide instruction as we move forward. So it's a really important opportunity for, where this, we're just presenting, and the board has an opportunity to ask us questions. Tomorrow, the community can log in and hear about some of the things we're looking to do to help increase the percentage of students taking the state assessments.
In addition to information about state assessments, it's more than that as well. The focus is on the overall elementary curriculum. So we'll be talking about reading and math and the other things that are being done in the classroom on a day-to-day basis.
And on February 28th, we're going to have a similar crusader chat at the middle level. And Chris, if you want to say a few words about that?
Sure. No, it'll be very similar to the elementary, only it'll apply to, you know, the middle school level, obviously beyond the state assessment. But what we're doing as, you know, as far as the curriculum goes, what we're doing to address some of these gaps, and, you know, just what our plan is, you know, moving forward, you know, so that we're able to help our students, you know, increase not only our participation in these state assessments, but also, you know, the proficiency rate, how we're just addressing the needs of all students, not just the ones that are achieving, you know, at a high level, you know, those that are struggling, but, you know, what we're doing to address all of our students.
And other ways that we will get the news out, there'll be a hot-off-the-presses newsletter from Mrs. Rodriguez regarding, it's really the higher-level things that that newsletter will focus on that impact the entire district. In addition to that, we'll be talking about staff training, and some of those look like, want to just kind of talk about what some of our trainings could look like?
Sure. Some of our training, some of the work that we're doing with our staffs are, now that we're back and we have this data, being able to share the data with our staff, really taking a deeper dive and looking at that, and what we can do instructionally for our students. Working also with, we had a cohort of staff going through and really looking at through the science, through the science that is going to be coming up with the shifts and changes there as well, as well as with our math, with the new math program that came online this year, looking at and having teachers have the opportunity to get together and have conversations district-wide for the first time in a long time about our math program and making sure that we're aligned across the district.
All right. And then the last thing that we need to do is we need to continue to communicate with our families, from our building leadership in particular. So Joe, do you want to just talk about ways that you could do that?
I guess I'm the last one left, so that's-
You are. That's it.
So we do struggle with, we, there's a lot of electronic communication going out. That's the new trend, obviously. One of the things we've discovered is some of that doesn't always reach our families as easy as it could. So we're looking at different methods of that. What do they use to communicate with? What are their, how do they receive some of the communications? So we're trying to look at those ways. We've also looked at things like as simple as our open house. Even though those things have come and gone, we expected a very large turnout at our open houses because we opened our schools back up for the first time after the pandemic, but that wasn't really the case. So why was that? Our parent-teacher conferences are coming up again in the spring, so we're looking at when parents are virtual, to have our teachers work with them a little bit more on communication. We have newsletters. We talked about Google Sites, like the high school uses. Now it's going to be transferred down to the elementary level so that we can kind of bring that up to speed a little bit to communicate with the families. And since Bargav's not sitting here tonight, I can talk about, we do some things at all levels in elementary, paper-wise now, because it's going back to paper report cards, because we were finding out that a very small percentage of our families were actually checking their students' report card at the elementary level. So we've gone back to paper now, where the traditional method of the envelope goes home, the parents have to sign the envelope, bring the envelope back in, so we know they've actually read the report card and are seeing what their children are doing.
And one of, one of the great benefits of being online, when you, when you present a report card to families, is you can, we know as a district, who clicked on the report card and who didn't, who read it and who didn't. And when we dove deeper into that information, that data earlier in the school year, we realized it wasn't enough. Not enough parents were reading their report cards at the elementary level. And that is exactly right. That's why we decided to go back to a paper-based report card. Now, it still lives in the electronic world for those parents who, you know, read it. But teachers in particular felt that there was, it was really important for a child to go home, hand the envelope to their parent or guardian, get it signed off, and then have that returned so that they knew that, you know, the information was being seen.
And it becomes a communication tool back and forth with the parent, too. When you're speaking to them, if you call the parent to chat about their child or whatever, you can refer to that report card, and you obviously know the parent has actually read it at that point, as opposed to being virtual.
And I think ultimately, there's never one direct avenue that's going to be the success and the answer to all of this. And I think that that's kind of what we're trying to show, is that between, you know, the people that are watching this presentation right now at home, and the crusader chat, and the newsletter from the superintendent, and the communication that's going home with the building principals, that the message is going to be collective about the importance of everybody sitting down and participating in the exams. So I think it's just the group of us kind of devising the best way to get the word out, and as many different methods as we can to kind of reinforce that, that goal.
So from an achievement standpoint, what our overarching goal will be to increase the number of students reaching proficiency on the ELA and math assessments as cohorts in grades 4 through 8 by 10%. And what that means is not, if they scored at 45%, as, if fourth grade scored at 45% last year, the goal isn't that next year, fifth grade will score 55%. What it will be is, we have to look at the individual numbers of students who are taking the assessments, and then we break that down, and we'd say 10% of the students who are taking, who are proficient, we would have an increase of 10% in that number. So that's how we broke that down. One of the ways that we, we hope to achieve that is we instituted a change for, in our, in our computer-based testing model. As indicated last, at last month's meeting, every student in grades 3 through 8 last year took both the ELA assessment and the math assessment on the computer. We decided, as a team, to change that. And let me just show you what that looks like for this coming year, and then the years beyond. Because we didn't want to just go back to paper, you know, wholeheartedly, because that's not going to adequately prepare our students for the coming years when there's no choice. So what we decided is for this year, there will be paper-based tests. Grades 3 in ELA, and there's also, what's not on there, grades 7 and 8 ELA will all be paper-based. Grades 3 through 8 in math will also be paper-based. And we talked about some of the challenges that go along with taking a math assessment, and, you know, what it takes to prepare a student to take a math assessment on a computer last month. The computer-based tests, grades 4, 5, and 6 for the ELA will take it on the computer. We felt that, as the leadership team, that taking the ELA test was, those students had already taken it, and some of those students have already taken it multiple times, you don't have to manipulate the computer or the tracking pad the way you do with, with a math assessment. So we decided to keep the grades 4 through 6 on the computer for next year.
And I think one of the things that we shared at the last Board of Ed meeting was that the original rollout of the CBT plan for the school district started out with this year's 6th grade cohort when they were in 3rd grade. They were the first group of students to take its CBT. So basically, 4th, 5th, and 6th are students who have only taken the state assessment on the computer, so it didn't make sense to revert back to paper for them, which is the reason why it's 4th, 5th, and 6th being computer-based for this year.
And then it has the subsequent years on there as well. Just one, one point to note, with grade 5 and grade 8 math next year being computer-based, there's a new science assessment that's coming out next year. It'll be administered in 5th grade and 8th grade. Computer-based is the only option. They don't have a paper option at this point. Now, New York State may say, you know, ah, guess what, we're going to give a paper option at the last minute, because, I know you'll be shocked to hear this, but they've done that before. And we're living that now with our NICE SLAT tests. But we want to, again, give our students a little more practice with, with the computer-based testing.
And this also, this, one last second, this also aligns with the state mandates in terms of when they are expecting everybody to be fully CBT. The 25, 26 school year is when the state has established- The twenty-five, twenty-six school year is when the state has established that all, all assessments are expected to be administered on the computer. And again, that, that schedule may very well change down the line, but as of right now, this follows the, the sequence in terms of what they're expecting for us in order to be able to participate in.
I think one of the things that, that these, these tests and the results of them have certainly spurned conversation as far as the importance of knowing where our students are in terms of their performance. I just wanna make sure that I'm clear, though, that from, from our role here, you know, I know neither of us are interested in creating, you know, assessment machines. We don't want our students to be only assessed, over-assessed, and make it all about being assessed. That is not our goal. But I, you know, the New York, in the New York State assessments, they're just one, they're one benchmark, you know, just like our STAR is a benchmark, this is one, you know, point in time where our students take a test. However, we do wanna create opportunities to gather information, because, like I said, you know, at the last, last month, we need to know and, and better, you know, better understand how our students are doing, what their needs are, and then subsequently, we need to know what the needs of our, our teachers and our staff are. And, you know, there'll be some people who say, oh, ten percent of the students who are proficient, you know, that's, that's a lofty goal, that's hard. We've talked about this as a leadership team. You gotta, you have, we have to shoot for something. We don't wanna just look, you know, keep a low threshold and say, eh, we'll kinda do it by two percent or one percent, and we wanna put things in place that, that best impact our kids. And our job, when we do that, is to support our staff, and to support our teachers, and to make sure that they have what they need in order to do that, and we talked about that a little bit last month. Tomorrow is one of our examples. Tomorrow's a busy day here at the Ed Center. We have the Crusader Chat, which Mr. Giudice spoke about, and I know you'll all be tuned in, and I know you'll all be tuned in at eleven thirty, but the other thing that's occurring in this building tomorrow is a meeting of what we call our Joint Standing Committee. And by contract, the MWTA has a clause in their contract that allows that if there is a concern, an area where that they wanna discuss that impacts, you know, their members, they can, they can, you know, reach out to our superintendent and request a meeting for our Joint Standing Committee. We're doing something a little bit different that we have, don't typically do. You know, Mrs. Rodriguez reached out to the union to say, you know what, we want, we wanna bring that, that meeting together, we wanna bring that group together, to basically discuss how we can collaborate and continue to collaborate as a district, to discuss what the needs of our, our teaching staff are, and how we can best, best meet them, and how we can best work together, work together, right? I think I covered pretty much that.
Mr. Kravitz, I just have a quick question.
Sure.
The ten percent, you said it is of proficiency, so what would that look like? Because you said it's not the forty-five percent going to fifty-five percent, so how, how do we visualize what, what that looks like?
So, I think the, the best way to, and before I get that, the reason we did only four through eight is because our third graders will be taking it for the first time, so we don't have anything to really compare that, that growth to. But the way we looked at it is, when you, when you are proficient, in order for a student to go from not proficient to proficient, they need to make over a year's worth of growth. So, it's, it's not as if they were just, hey, look, you were at a two last year with a scale score of, I don't know, five hundred, whatever the number is, and then next year you're gonna be at a two, and you're also gonna have a scale score of five hundred. That's a year's worth of growth, and we want our students to grow by at least a year. Our expectation is that we will have, you know, at least ten percent of our students who reach proficiency to, to go beyond that. And what that would look like would be if we have two hundred students who take the assessment in a particular grade level, if, or if two hundred of those students are proficient on a particular grade level, we would then have an additional twenty students above the, the two hundred from this year compared to, to next year, who would reach, you know, the proficiency milestone, so, or marker. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
And the importance of calculating it at the, by cohort is because you're talking about the same population of students, where you don't wanna compare fourth grade to fourth grade, because this year's fourth grade is gonna be a brand-new group of students compared to last year. So, you wanna make sure that when you're tracking student growth, you're tracking it in a way where it's the same populations of kids from the previous year, and similar to what Matt said, the way that the state assessment works, when they sit and take the fourth grade exam, the fifth grade exam is scaffolded based upon the fifth grade standards, so it's, it's anticipating a full year's worth of growth. So, to get a student from not proficient to proficient is more than a full year's worth of growth, because they were not performing at grade level the previous year, then they would be in excess of grade level, so it's, it's beyond that year's worth of growth. But you wanna make sure that you're talking about the same population of students in order to predict what that growth will look like. I hope that makes sense, the way that I explained it.
It does. So, if I'm understanding correctly, the fourth grade class last year will be compared to the fifth grade class next year.
That's exactly, right. They will be...
They're moving up.
That is exactly right. We will be looking at the results of how that population of students performed last year, what the number of proficient students was last year, and comparing it to how they, how that same group performs in the subsequent year's test this year.
Now, I don't recall, at the last presentation, was the exact numbers of proficiency provided? I don't recall the presentation.
We, we gave the percentage of overall students who participated. We didn't give the actual number of students, but we can certainly provide that, too.
Okay.
We can send that out.
That would be great.
Yep.
So, the, I have two questions on the, on the tests. These are the state tests.
Yep.
So, what would be, is there a plan that if the state does away with the tests, like they've done in the past, do we have a way to administer comparable tests?
Do you wanna take that one?
Sure. Yeah, so there, and I think in various versions of this presentation over the years, you've heard me say from time to time that the state has established a new benchmark. For example, I don't know if I mentioned the last time or not, but there were a number of years where the state assessment was administered over three days. And then, I think that was pre-two thousand eighteen, I think two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, sometime around there, the state went back to administering it over two days, and they basically said at that time, you cannot do a comparison of, because this is essentially a new test compared to the, the test previously. So, ultimately, what will happen is, we would have to start fresh, but then that's where it, it kind of goes back to what Matt had said earlier, this is only one little piece of the overall picture. That's when we would go back to looking at how students are performing on the common assessments that they're being administered internally, including the STAR exam. So, even though the STAR exam is not a direct correlation identically of you're proficient on the state assessment and you're proficient on this, there is a predictability between the two in terms of how the students perform on the STAR and how they perform on the state assessment.
But they do map to standards, right?
The STAR exam is a skill-based test. The state assessment maps directly to the state, to...
I see.
Yes.
I understand.
And that's the reason why when, when Matt had said that the STAR exam is a nationally-normed exam, it's administered across, across the entire country, and they norm it accordingly to every single student who takes the exam, not just New York State.
Well, we did just, just so you know, we did just purchase, or we had access to a package through STAR, and we did just enhance that, that package, which would allow for, which will allow our teachers to monitor progress on a more frequent basis than just the three-time benchmarking. Those, those questions are standards, are standards-based, which is a good thing. And then the common assessments, and then the common assessments that have been and will be created, such as, you know, using previous New York State tests, those are also obviously, you know...
And is there a plan to move from cohort to individual assessment?
So, I think, well, I think the whole, the ultimate goal would be to create, and we talked, I think we talked about this last time, was, is really to create these profiles of individual learners.
Right.
So that, and I, I think I was, what I said last time was, that's what, we need to do that. Our kids need that, our, our staff needs to have that, so that, you know, if you're student A, we know what your needs are, and so that we can best meet them, but that's ultimately, that's the...
And there's also, we've, we've heard discussions at the state level, where the state is talking about the gradual evolution of the state exam could potentially be moving to an adaptive exam.
Gotcha. Which is, which will be a, a major shift.
Right. But obviously, we don't have great luck with the state, so...
Right. And we can only plan on the information that we're being given at this moment in time, and we gotta adjust...
Their statements and their actions usually never intersect.
And at the end of the day, the, the state, you know, like I said earlier, this, what these results do is they kinda kick, kick, you know, kick things into overdrive a little bit, which is a...
That's great.
Which I don't think is a bad thing.
Fantastic.
But it gets us to become more laser-focused on, you know, the things that are up on there.
This is really good.
Yeah. Is it possible that one of the factors in the economically disadvantaged students being lower? Could that be their lack of exposure to computers as opposed to more?
So, I don't, I don't know if we have that information. I will say that...
But it could be a factor.
It could be. At the same time, all of our students have been fully one-to-one now for a number of years. So, you know, a student comes in, they're, they're given a Chromebook. How they manipulate that, and how they use, how they use that...
Oh, right. They bring it home with them, right?
Right. And how, but how they're best instructed on them, you know, is again, something we, we have to continue to look at. You know, what is the, what are the expectations for the number of words per minute a student can type, you know, versus, and that's, that's hard. You know, you have a third grader who, you know, last year, for the first time, I don't wanna speak for the building principals, but I, I think everyone will attest to, that's challenging, for a student to, you know, be able to look at a passage, look at multiple passages, compare passage one to passage two, and then type out an extended response.
Are you testing them on their keyboarding skills, or are you testing them on...
Right, exactly.
...funk knowledge at that point, when they're at that age?
Correct. Exactly. At any age.
And then, and then the professional development, which is, you know, will be in collaboration with the, with the teachers as well, is a major, is a major part of all of this. And ultimately, at the end of the day, instruction to standard, standards and skills, using data is of utmost, utmost important, but supporting and enhancing the tier-one instruction, the, the instruction that all of our students get in, in every general ed classroom is really what the focus needs to be and will be.
And that, that was something that was talked about at the last Board of Ed meeting, where tier-one instruction is what happens at the classroom level. The whole focus of this is about equipping our teachers with that information on how to best be able to support the kids on a day-to-day basis within the classroom.
Hey, also, Ed, we, with our fourth and fifth graders taking the ELA on the computer, we all agreed to have our fourth and fifth grade students, when we come back from mid-winter break, to take the two thousand twenty-two ELA assessment, to have them have five weeks after that date to kinda look at, what did they struggle with? What were the things that they, that they had difficulty with, to give that last boost before that assessment?
And it's not a full assessment, because the state doesn't release every question from last year. You know, they, they embed fake question, or, you know, oh, you know, field test kinds of questions to see, oh, could a student answer it, not answer it? Those are all removed when they release the question. So, this is a much shorter assessment, but should give all of us an overall better understanding of how our kids should be able to perform.
It's really impressive.
From April.
Really impressive.
I have, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I have questions for the crusader chat, so a little bit of questions, a little bit of feedback. Will the performance, that's performance, the crusader chat be taped tomorrow and made available on the website?
It will. And will it also allow us to do, Stacy, is it'll allow us to cut out snippets of information, so that as we continue to evolve in how we, you know, relay information to our family and to our community, you know, I know you'll be, you know, not everyone has time to listen to an hour, you know, or an hour and a half presentation.
Right.
They'll be allowed to or able to, because it will be recorded, but it will allow us to take some of the more pertinent components of it, and then, you know, allow us to then say, all right, here's something that we thought was really important about a potential reading program, so you know what, hey, folks, check this out, and then we'll have that.
Okay, so that'll be on, hopefully, what's tomorrow, Thursday, so hopefully by Friday? I mean, is there...
Yes.
Yes.
No pressure. I just, you know...
People are gonna be very eager to watch it.
These are just, it's just the feedback that I get. Okay, so that's good. And then, I think some of the feedback that I had in regards to some of the communications, I mean, coming from a parent, I think it's, I think we've come a long ways, so I think the communication that we've gotten has improved drastically. I think, again, some of the feedback that I get from the community is building to building, is where there's like some discrepancy still, and how we're utilizing some of the systems that, you know, Mr. Koto mentioned. You know, it's difficult. I, I don't know what the answer is. Again, I'm just kinda providing the feedback that sometimes we're getting bombarded with too many text messages, which kind of desensitizes us as a parent. You know, unless it's like a lockdown emergency, it should be an email.
We talked about that yesterday.
Can I just answer that question?
Sure.
Because I, I heard the same thing, and what I've heard is that, that we have a little bit of a glitch in our system. What do you, why are you looking at me? No, we have a little, we have a glitch, and I think that you're getting multiple text messages for the same thing, and there may be an issue.
I'm not referring to that, but I have heard that that's a problem, but I, that's not happening to me.
But in addition to, in addition to that, we, our administrator, our administrative team yesterday heard, well, the building leaders heard for the first time yesterday, that this is what the superintendent's gonna be doing as far as the newsletter. The expectation from the school district is for our individual buildings also on a monthly basis, starting in, you know, we have, we have to play around with it and get them to understand the nuances of it, but starting at the end of, or the start of next year.
Start of September.
If there would be a monthly newsletter from their buildings as well, covering, using a template, so we know that everyone's gonna have a curricular focus, you know, as part of it. There's gonna be a PTA focus, there's going to be a one-stop shop for information. It may not, it may not cover every single thing that might be covered in a text message, but it would still allow for parents to go back and say, yep, they told me about this, here's, here's the calendar for, for the month, and, you know, here's the information.
And I think that by centralizing it, it reduces the need for the frequency of things that are going out. If you, if you consolidate it well into one centralized location, it doesn't have to be repeated, you know, we talked about just the, the email with the PDF that then gets lost in your inbox, and you're like, where was that? And then you're trying to sift through it, even if you do a search for North Main Elementary School, you might see X number of emails that are in there, and you're trying to figure out where it is, to reduce that into one centralized location where you know where to go, no matter what the question is related to any of the items that might have been sent out.
And the goal would be the combination of pertinent information, you know, and getting our parents and families in the buildings and understanding what's going on, but also selling our school district, because there are a lot of really great things going on in these, these buildings. And, you know, I, we could do presentations, I know you would all love to hear that over and over and over again about all the great things, but it, it's our job to continue to let the community know what those great things are, and we're continuously looking at ways to, to do that.
And we have to be careful not to overuse it to a certain extent. This is what happened, you know, and what you're saying. There's so many emails that go out after a while, it's like you said. Unless it has, you know, something in the title, in the subject line that grabs your attention, it's just another email. We have phone calls, lots of times we'll call parents, they see the missed call, they, we left a voicemail. They don't check the voicemail, they just call us back and say, North Main called you. Well, let me see where it came from, because it was me, the nurse, it was the teacher. They're just inundated with so much, I think. So, we have to really be smart in what we send out and how often we do.
And understanding the viewing habits of, of people and, and community members, you know, one of the things, when we look at the, the Google extension that we'd be using for this, we can tell who's looked at it, how long they've been on it, you know, if somebody's, they're not gonna view, they're not gonna view now.
I just said that to Jeff. I was like, I gotta go home and open my damn report card now and feel pressure.
We can check. We can check right now.
I haven't opened it. I haven't opened it.
But it's different at the secondary because your grades are updated and you know how your students are doing, your, your child is doing. So it's a little bit different, but.
And the email only came out today. So, so you.
So I have a little time. I get 24 hours.
Yes. It's not, you know, it's only been a couple of hours.
Yeah. No pressure.
Anthony, you had a question?
No, you guys covered it. Thanks.
I'll throw you one last one. With the discrepancy with the scores for the STAR assessment versus the ELA and the math, is there a different assessment or diagnostic tool that we should be looking at that gives a more accurate reflection? Because if you look at the, at the STAR data, you might say to yourself, I, you know, I'm getting, you know, 75% of my kids are proficient. And then when it comes to the actual ELA or the math, the results are drastically different. Is it lulling people into a false sense of, of, you know, confidence? Is there another alternative that would be more accurately reflective of the state assessments to better prepare and better guide teachers to, you know, focus instruction?
I can speak to that. I, I think part of the goal of this and, and that's, some of the discussion is about the computer-based testing. And I think it was something that I had mentioned at the end of the last presentation is making sure that the state assessment is a true indication of how our kids are doing. And I think even, you know, we, we all met with the teachers to, last week, to share all of this information with them, to update them in terms of where we are. And the teachers were like, I think many of the teachers' response was, okay, going back to paper, at least for now, will be a more indication of how the kids are doing because they're more adept at taking it on the paper than they are on the computer.
But to just further answer that, there are, there are guidelines for the benchmarks that we're allowed to use from a New York State level. They have to be nationally normed. They have to be, you know, they have to hit a series of criteria. And I think what we're, to, to kind of go back to what, what Don had said, our goal is to put other things in place so that ultimately we have a better understanding of how our students are doing, you know, on a day in and day out.
Before you even get to the assessment.
Before we.
Before this assessment.
So are there other things, are there, in Star that we can, we can look at? Yeah. Yes, there, there are. You know, and as we continue to, to review our curriculum in, in general, particularly with, with reading and to determine, you know, and to ask our teachers how the, the math program is, is going for them, that information will be, be helpful to determine what, what path we go.
And I think Brian had mentioned earlier about the, having the students sit and take chunks of the old state assessments. What he was speaking about was really more at the elementary level because elementary teachers have their students for a large chunk of the day, and they have a, a greater chunk of time in order to be able to administer assessments like that. It's a little bit different at the middle level where in, in having conversations with the teachers, it's hard for them to say, I'm going to administer, you know, session one from the 2018 exam, which is a, a large chunk of time when they only see the kids for 40 minutes a day. So the common assessments that they're doing at the elementary level compared to the common assessments at the middle school, they're working on creating assessments aligned to the material that they're teaching at that particular time, where they can do online a search of old state, you know, if they're working on Pythagorean theorem and math, they can do a search in the tool that we use that, that mirrors the state assessment portal for old state assessment questions in the Pythagorean theorem and assign them to the kids and see how the kids are doing directly linked to the standards that have been assessed on old state assessments on that skill. So they have the ability to be able to see how the kids are doing, linked directly to the way that they're going to be assessed on the exam, and, you know, provide support for the kids at that particular time. Does that, does that make sense of the way that, yeah?
See, the, the two items that you brought up to me are align instruction to standards and skills, and then the progress monitoring. And I'm assuming to, to Dan's point, if those things show a discrepancy, you're going to constantly look at ways to understand why there's a discrepancy and you might change things to.
Yep.
And to give our, our teachers, you know, intervention strategies in, in real time. That's ultimately the.
In the last meeting, we presented on a timeline, it was review data, like reviewing data was almost like throughout the entire timeline because it's constantly curriculum modification, providing student supports and, you know, making those adjustments along the way.
Do you want to just speak a little bit about the work that Ms. Cook did in, at Smith Clove? Just to give everyone an idea of kind of the work, some of the work that is being done?
Sure. So in our, our building principles, and I think that, again, I don't want to speak for them, but I think it's been very clear to all of our leadership team, the importance of information, right? And one of the things that we're, we wanted, we want to know is when we have students in our, in our class, who is in our student, who is in our classrooms? How often are they in our classrooms? You know, if we have kids who are constantly pulled out for extra support services, and is that the best, as, as we make decisions in terms of how to best support students, is that the best model? Should we constantly be pulling kids out to say, oh, you're going to go to an, an IAS class? No, now you're going to go to the ENL teacher. Now you're going to go to this teacher or that teacher. One of the things that they did at Smith Clove, and that template will be shared with the other buildings, is, you know, Ms. Cook, what she did, she asked her teachers, break it down in literally in five-minute increments. Let's walk through your day. And let's talk about academic time, non-academic, academic time, transfer time, so when you're walking from, you know, classroom to recess, or how is your time best utilized? So what you, what we, one of the things that, that revealed itself is there are classrooms in, there are a handful of first grade classes that have, you know, their entire class for, you know, less than half an hour a day, less than 20 minutes a day, less than 15 minutes at, at some point. So as classroom teachers, you know, everybody wants to help their student, right? But if their kids aren't in their room, it's really hard to do that if they're not there. Now, they are, those kids are working with wonderful professionals when they're, when they're pulled out. But I think, again, it goes, comes back to what we said last time was that often could lead to instructing in silos. And, you know, people, a, a reading teacher, an ENL teacher, a classroom teacher, working on their own through no fault of their own, just because that's kind of how the, the structure is set up, but it will allow us to review. And that's just an example. Thank you for bringing that up.
Right. And I, I think one of the things that was a great indicator was that she took a look at the data that she had collected from the teachers and then took a look at a cohort of students that had taken, I believe it was the STAR reading or some assessment, and realized a group of students didn't do well. When she took that group of students and looked at them and the classroom teacher in the context of that, they were missing that period because they were being pulled out for something else. So that was like an aha moment. So I think that's one of the things that we're doing is that when we take a look at data, there are things that we may not have noticed and then begin to notice and, and able to make change. So I thought that was, that was a, a really good point.
And I have, I can't stress enough, we are not, as a district leadership team, coming at this from a gotcha standpoint for our, our teachers, for our students, for our building principals. That is not our, the way we're coming at this. Our, we're coming at this from, let's understand the needs of our students. How do we best know that, you know, what their needs are? How do we know the needs of the teachers? What questions do we have to ask our teachers so that then we can get them what they need? And ultimately, I said it last time, it's our job to support them. And it's, you know, Eric and I, it's our job to support the people to our right and left and in the audience. And then subsequently, it's our job to support the, the rest of our staff.
We, we refer to your model as an agile model? And, and the term means constant improvement as opposed to measuring like you did bad? Or it's like, how do I constantly help you improve?
It's about measuring growth, you know? So it's not just about measuring one score in, at a particular time. But we need to know what we're measuring. We need to know how to, how to measure it. And then we need to know where to house all that information so that we're not wasting time trying to find out the information about a student so that we can get that information into everybody's hands as quickly as we can.
I had one follow-up question. Sorry for the, in regard to the Crusader chat. Do you know how many questions you were submitted for, for tomorrow?
We didn't do it that way. So, so I think it's, it's kind of a risk, right? We, we've been in, we've been in positions.
You would think we would have done it that way.
No, no, we didn't. It's one of those.
I was to show you what I know. You're not going back to Facebook Live, are you?
No, we are not.
I will say, after that Facebook Live event, I, I did call Eric and say, just, you know, I never thought there was such a thing as a curriculum emergency, but I think there is now. And, no, so it won't be Facebook Live. It won't be, you know, peppering with questions. You know, if they want to ask a question, they could use the chat feature or they could raise their hand. And the other difference with Facebook is you don't always need to have a, a face to the name or a name to the face or, or however you want to frame it. So sometimes it's really easy to ask a question or be critical or however you want to do it. A Google Meet is different, right? It's just literally having a conversation. And, but our job is to answer the questions that people may have. They may have the answers or we may not, but we'll.
And now that you clarified that for me, because I thought it was that you were submitting questions. As I was going to encourage the public, because I know, again, as board members, that's one of the things that we get a lot is, how do I get an answer to this? How do I find out the answer to my question? I have a question, but I don't know who to ask. So I'm always saying, you know, this is an opportunity for these parents, if you have a specific curriculum question, to ask it.
And they can always ask. I mean, certainly.
They can.
It's out there, like, you know, they can email us.
But it's also difficult for people that are at work tomorrow at 11:30. They're, if they can't log on, then they can't ask their question if they didn't have the opportunity to already submit it.
But I will say to that end, for every person who says, hey, you know, it was really hard to get on, you know, during the day, then there are parents that who are, I can't, I can't sit down at, at seven o'clock at night because I'm running from this to that. And it's, I, I think we live in a really busy, like, time, right? Everybody's super busy. And I think trying to find that sweet spot is what we're continuously trying to, you know, to do. And that's continuously how we're trying to evolve. I don't know what the answer to that is, but.
I think the other thing is, is that this is our first time doing that. And so, you know, we talked yesterday, and one of the things that we said was, there may be topics that parents, we have our own agenda, and there may be topics that we're not covering, but certainly what I would expect our people to send me an email and say, there's going to be future Crusader chats, and maybe 11:30 doesn't work. And we get, you know, an abundance of emails that say, well, 12 o'clock is easier because I can take lunch. We're trying to make it quick and easy for people. So it's, it's, it's our first time. It's sort of like when we did Facebook Live, Eric, we still have PTSD from that day. But we, but we are, we are doing this because we want to make sure that we give people multiple opportunities. And I think that the Crusader chat is another way of allowing people who are busy to reach out to us. But we hope that if you're unable to attend the Crusader chat and you say, you know, 12 o'clock is better, email us. We really want to hear from our community, and this is just another venue or an avenue for people to get to talk to us.
And the middle-level Crusader chat will be the second time around, so I encourage everybody to dial in for that one. And we could take all of the things that were learned and you will see the, the new and improved middle-level Crusader chat around two.
And this is, this is an involvement, because if you recall way back, I know there's some board members on here that recall, it used to be snack or tea or something with Elsie.
Oh, tea with the superintendent?
Yeah.
I think it was coffee with the superintendent.
Yeah, it was something to that effect. And we used to come here and sit in the conference room with you.
Right. And then it turned into coffee with people sitting there and then people on the, on the, on the, on a Google Meet. So we're, we're, we're trying everything we can. And we just hope that people come out and, you know, meet with us.
Maybe happy hour.
Thank you. Yeah. That'll go worse than either of you. Don't go there.
Why does it have to be noon or seven o'clock? Maybe it's like three, four o'clock, right?
It's five o'clock somewhere. It's great.
Are there any other questions?
Best way to plug the link? So I'm a parent. I want to go on tomorrow at 11:30.
It's going to be right on the district website.
District website homepage.
Yep.
I think it's on the social media. You can see it as you drive by on 32. It's, it's out there multiple.
Yeah, the QR, although that, that's not very hands-free though, is it? The key, you're not putting the QR code on the, on the sign.
Well, I would like to thank you for, it's very clear that you put a lot of work and thought into it and really appreciate the clarity, the goals, and the solutions-based process that you put out in front of us. So I'm looking forward to seeing how it moves forward. And I appreciate your bodyguards being up there for you.
We appreciate them too.
Thank you very much. Very, very much.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Next up, approval of the revised agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the revised agenda, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the minutes for January 11, 2023. Motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
First reading of the policy manual update. Are there any questions before I call a vote? Okay. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Action items. Authorization of the attendance at the 2023 New York, National School Board Association Annual Conference. That is for me to attend, to go to the conference. I was able to take some time off from work, so I'll be able to attend. A lot of really great sessions. I went through the whole agenda before I registered. So are there any questions before I ask for a motion? May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution to approve participation of Monroe Woodbury students on Minnesick Valley New York High School Trap League team. Motion? Second. Are there any questions?
Yes. What exactly is the high school trap league team? Lori?
It's, it's very similar to when, when people join a sportsman's club. So it involves, it does involve shooting. It involves target shooting. We do not have a team here. It is nationally sponsored, and it is a sport. We do not have it recognized as a sport within Section 9, but there is a team at Minnesick Valley who run it essentially as a club. It is completely off-site. It is on the weekends. There are certified personnel there. And I know one of the questions that was asked last time was, are there, is there any equipment stored on our, at our, on our campus? There is nothing on our campus. It doesn't take place on any campus. It takes place at a sportsman's club. It is very well regulated.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How many Monroe Woodbury students?
I don't know how many have.
I think we have one right now. We have one. We have one.
I thought we did one student before then, didn't we?
No, that was a different, that, but this is a new student. This is a student that we're, is only one student.
This is not the first year we've done this. I believe last year we had about.
We did it as well, yes.
Maybe that's what I'm thinking of, last year.
Any, any concerns about insurance or any reason on insurance?
No, it's all covered through the program itself. I can get more information about the program.
Okay. Thank you.
It's, I think as more students hear about it, I think it will become more common. We do not, we have not promoted the program itself. They hear about it outside of school and then ask if we can participate. For high school students only? They may have expanded it to middle school. I can get that information.
I don't, I don't think so, because I, I spoke to the superintendent there. I believe right now it's just high school, but it could.
Talk about, there was some talk about it. I don't know if it has happened yet, but, thank you.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the revised 20, 22, 23 calendar for the students? Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Revised calendar for the board meetings. Any questions? Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Personnel. Ms. Hock?
I respectfully request approval of personnel items 10-1 through 10-15.
Are there any questions? Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Business and financial. Mr. Cahill?
Thank you. I also respectfully request approval of business and financial items 11.1 through 11.6.
Any questions for Mr. Cahill? Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Committees on special education. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Report by student representative. Jenna?
So this month was very special because I got to see the eighth graders from the middle school come up to the high school and tour what will soon be their home for the next four years. I got to speak to some parents and students about my experience at the high school and how Monroe Woodbury really allows students to find and deepen their passions, no matter what those passions may be. I talked about how going to such a large school means that there are so many opportunities for students to truly explore and understand their interests. And then I emailed the middle school principal, and we're setting up a time next month for the student council president, the senior class president, and I to go to the middle school and talk to the National Junior Honor Society students because they're all eighth graders who have recently toured, and just have an open discussion about what would help them transition to the high school. Any concerns they may have, what they think will allow them to succeed, so that I can bring all those thoughts back to high school administration. I really want to hear directly from the upcoming freshmen and answer any questions that they may have also. And then I had the opportunity during the past two days to travel to Albany with the Orange County Youth Bureau, along with one other senior from Monroe Woodbury, in order to advocate with some New York State senators and assembly members why youth programs are so important and why funding for such programs is so important in the state's budget. One of the programs I know the Youth Bureau has a part in is the Safe School Ambassadors with the high school and the middle school, which is a group of students that helps prevent the bullying and mistreatment of other students within the school. So I was very fortunate to speak about my experience with the Youth Bureau and explain to elected officials in Albany why youth programs are so important. And then today I visited Pine Tree, and they told me they had succeeded in their school-wide heart incentive for the second time and are going to have a winter wonderland next Thursday, which they explained is where they get to wear their pajamas and watch movies as a reward for their good behavior. And then some of my friends in the high school had FBLA and Model U win competitions last week, and they all did extremely well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our reports by Board of Education committees. Can I, let's start with visitation.
Visitation toured the bus garage. Not a lot happening there, aside from some new carpet in the office, a couple of new exterior doors. Their big takeaway was they, buildings and grounds came in and put a wall to separate the coffee machine, which generates a lot of heat, and the server, which is very adverse to heat. So that made Bargov happy. Aside from that, I believe our next visit is April 26th at the, the Craigville Road School. We might throw one in between because that's a big gap, but if so, we will let you know.
One Room Schoolhouse, Stone School.
Thank you. Any questions? Policy committee?
Yeah. We met on February 2nd to revise the policy on instructional materials, which we had, which you approved, we approved the first reading of tonight. We will be meeting again on Thursday, March 9th at 8:00 AM.
Great. Audit committee, we haven't had a current meeting. The next meeting is scheduled for March 23rd. And that's the only update I have right. Any other questions? Student board representative selection committee. Jamelle, would you like to take that one?
Yeah, sure. So the Monroe Woodbury Board of Education is seeking a member of our class of 2024 to serve as student rep on the Board of Education. They will serve as the voice of the students by providing brief reports and sharing issues of importance to the student body at Board of Ed meetings, as you've seen Jenna does a great job of. So if you can, if not, sure, please apply. Candidates have, must have a strong communication skills and will work collaboratively with district and building administrators to meet with students from all buildings. Identify areas of interest and concern among the student body and present findings and recommendations to the Board of Ed. Eligible students must be a senior at Monroe Woodbury High School during the 2023, 2024 school year, attend board meetings, as you've seen, and be prepared to make a brief student report at. report at BOE meetings. Interested students are asked to fill out an online application, which can be found on our website and will be emailed to all eligible students this month. Applications, along with the resume, will be due by March 31st.
Any questions? Thank you. Reports by Board and Central Office.
Unfortunately, I missed the NHS induction last night. I feel if you want to congratulate all the students on, on being inducted.
So I have some exciting news. They finished our house on the water in Clearwater, so this will be my last board meeting. We're moving somewhat south. It should be, it, it was supposed to be completed before, but it is definitely done. Yesterday I was sitting on a dock with my feet in the water, so, exciting for us anyway.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Lot of fun.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Oh, I guess it's my turn. I would like to thank Dr. Hassler and Mr. Privitz and their team, the building principals, for all the hard work they did on the, the assessments and thank you for your presentation. Congratulations to their natures, inductees. And I would also like to thank Smith Clove for hosting the Readathon, which I participated in. It was so much fun. I read to Mrs. Machete's kindergarten class and it's, it's one of the perks of being on the board. I really, really love doing that. And I am looking forward to attending the presentation of Willy Wonka on Saturday.
March 10.
March.
CV.
That's March. Okay. I got my dates wrong. Okay. March.
CV on Friday.
Central Valley.
Yeah, CV on Friday.
Okay. All right, then I'll go to that one.
Thank you.
Don, thank you for your years of service. Appreciate you very much. I was part of the visitation group that was with Dan at the bus garage. Saw a lot of great work going on there of people who are dedicated to getting our students safely to these buildings and then more importantly, probably for everybody watching, back home to you safely. So please make sure you have a little patience with our bus drivers and don't forget to thank them and all the folks there at the bus garage, at the hub, that make all of that happen. We clearly couldn't teach them if they weren't there. So I appreciate all of that.
Thank you.
Um, thank you to the presentation this evening. It was great. I want to give a shout out also to Smith Clove and to Ms. Reagan and also to the wonderful librarian there, Kathy Gardner. She is fabulous and she has just a really warm and inviting area there, so it was great to go in and read. I appreciate that. And I want to wish our student athletes good luck. Next Monday is the start of spring sports and we've got a lot of great new opportunities for our students, so hopefully they're taking advantage of that and I wish them good luck.
This is the best winter we've had in Iowa. All right? I'm just thrilled with it. But other than that, I wish everybody a good night.
Thank you, Don, for your service on the board and good night to everyone.
Good night to everyone and I'm Mr. Don Beeler. Thank you very much for everything. From our very first conversations, you've always had a huge focus on data and I think that, you're laughing because you know it's true.
Yeah, no, I, trust me, I know.
So it's when, in my mind, one of the reasons why the focus on data has continued and why we're doing better as a district. So thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. Ms. Hock?
I'd like to acknowledge the retirees who are on tonight's agenda. I had the fortunate opportunity to meet with some of them in person when they handed in their, their letters and their passion just, it was, it was very bittersweet. I know that it's an exciting time for them because they're looking forward to retirement, but their passion for our school, our community, and most importantly, our kids shine through very much so. And I just want to thank them for their service.
Thank you.
And just a quick thanks again to the administrative team, but also thank you to Kristen Ranher, the department chairs and the teachers, that all certainly contributed to the information and their reflections on tonight's presentation. Congratulations to Mr. Beeler on retiring, along with all of the other retirees. Happy Counselor Appreciation Week. I, I think a guidance counselor who may have had an impact on you over time, so happy Counselor Appreciation Week. Congratulations to our high school science research students that competed last week in the regional science symposium and they're advancing next month to Albany and to the FBLA students that also competed last week that are advancing to Rochester in April. Congratulations to everybody.
Thanks. Thank you.
So I also had a chance to read over at Smith Clove. I read a story about a turtle who wasn't, who was never able to live in Antarctica, but he was successful in his quest. He did bring some friends. One of his friends he brought was a dung beetle. And if you ever really want to see kids in first grade laugh, you should, you should talk about the definition of the word dung with them because they already, they knew the answer, first of all, which was hysterical, but they had so, so much fun. I think I had more fun, but it was great and thank you for the invite. National Honor Society is one of the, one of the, there are a lot of highlights, but National Honor Society is always a highlight for everybody. Congratulations to Ms. DeLonge and Ms. Greenblatt, who oversee the National Honor Society organization. I, I think even more impressive are the student leaders, who, those students who are, who were inducted in years past and the amount of service that they still have to do and that they still try to impact on everybody else is, is wonderful to see. And Don, congratulations on, on the big move. Good luck.
So I'd just like to acknowledge and thank Jean Amorino and Carol Durkin for their donations. It was on the agenda tonight under business, financial to the John J. Tomasic Memorial Scholarship Fund. And I'd just like to take a moment, Elsie and I had discussed this, to talk about a meeting that we had on January 5th related to contract transportation. So we hosted a meeting, we invited three of the contractors that we deal with and that serve non-public school children that are residents of the district. We had local municipal leaders here, Supervisor Cardone, Mayor Dwyer was there as well and Mayor Medina, local police departments were there, the state police. And we basically were discussing safety concerns and issues that residents have expressed to our local leaders about some of these contractors, about other contractors that are operating in and around the school district. So that was really the focus of that. We, we had the contractors there, so we discussed observations that residents had made. We talked about their safety protocols. They reassured us that they emphasize safety, they will continue to emphasize safety. They have the appropriate training, they abide by the New York State laws and regulations. A couple of the action items, one suggestion was we initiate a portal of some sort to report incidents if someone observes a school bus that's driving unsafely or that sort of thing. That was an idea that was floated. We also discussed the idea of just knowing who the contractors are and who to contact,[1588.04]